Okay, this is a call to order for the amended agenda. City of Dunellen Special Council Meeting, August 22, 2022. It is now 5:35 PM. Would you all please advise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in whose love we believe, and justice for our all.
So I do not see a lot of people in the audience. If anybody would like to give a short prayer, you can, out of the four or five people. If not, Ms. Williams, are you up to two in one night?
Oh, yeah. I pray. I'm here. (laughing). Oh, God, we come before you once again with our hands and our hearts. Just because of who you are, we just give you all the glory. We thank you for each and every one that's present here. We pray your blessings upon each and every one of us, and you will cause us to do what's best for the City of Dunellen. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Okay, we can sit down, and we're ready for full call.
Ray Roy?
Yes, sir.
Last Mayor Hensher?
Here.
Captain Forman Kenny?
Here.
Captain Forman Williams?
Here.
For the record, Captain Forman Caverdine Abson, she is out of town. Jan Smith, Finance Officer?
There.
Troy Slattery, Public Work?
Here.
Georgina Se, Community Development?
Here.
Julie Danowski, Records Corp. Oh, I'm sorry. Michelle's here now. Just going down the list. Michelle Leonard, Assistant Clerk?
Here.
Chief McQuaid?
Here.
Lieutenant Yawks?
Here.
And we do not have an attorney for this meeting tonight. And the agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Monday, August 15, 2022, and was amended on Wednesday, August 17, to add backup to item number two, and amended again on August 18 to add items number three and four, and to change the time of the meeting to 5:30.
Okay, before we get started, we have a... some attendees, not too many. If you want to speak, if you sign up, you'll be called first. If you haven't signed up, you still will have an opportunity to speak after those that have signed up that have had an opportunity to speak. If you do elect to speak, please give us your name and address. Speak into the microphone. This is being recorded for posterity. Everything you say can be listened to five years from now. Hard... when you think about that, that's scary.
That is.
So with that said, a little bit about this, this is a council meeting. We do offer comments on every item as we work through it, along with at the beginning. So we'll get started now. The first order of business, does council have any comments regarding the agenda?
No, sir.
No, we're good. Okay, now we go to public comments. This is non-agenda item. If there's something that is not on the agenda that you would like to speak to, something new, something different, something unusual, this is your opportunity to do so. Do we have any... anyone signed up, Miss Odom, to speak?
No, sir.
Is there anyone in the audience that hasn't signed up that'd like to speak? Ms. DeArbo?
(inaudible) 661 Camp, (inaudible). I chose this time to speak because we are lightly attended. Some of you know Ms. Hilton resides in the planning commission.
Who?
Hilton.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Marianne...
Yes, yes.
resides in the planning commission. And some of you have been around for many years. She has served. Some of you have not. She couldn't even tell us how many years she has served, either as a council member or on the planning commission. So I think it would be most appropriate if the council were in direct staff to put together some hypodized plaque in recognition of her years of service, and maybe historically we can go back and find some of those things where she's made great contributions. That would be wonderful.
Yeah, very nice.
So obvious that we need to do that.
Yeah.
How incredibly obvious. That is, if we ever needed to do something, we certainly need to do that. Thank you for bringing that up. Any other public comments on non-agenda items? Miss Odom, anything on Zoom?
No, sir. We have no one on Zoom.
Okay. With that said, please note that council has not made a comment regarding the agenda. No, and we have had public comment on non-agenda items. We go to item number one, the agreement 2022-25 CDBG Home Investment Partnership Program with Marion County. You want to give a brief description of what this is, Manny, so if public wants to comment, they know what they're commenting to?
This is Jan.
Hmm?
This is Jan.
Oh, Jan?
(inaudible).
It's okay, Jan. You changed seats. I didn't see you.
I'm trying to be... I'm conspicuous. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What this is, is the city opted to participate in the CDBG grant-funded program through Marion County rather than go out on our own and apply to the state for grant funds. We thought we'd have more opportunity participating with Marion County. And we had entered into agreement. It expired. In June, Marion County sent us a letter to execute stating we wanted to remain in the program for another couple of years, which we did. We brought that to council. Well, in between all that, HUD changed some of the requirements because CDBG is a HUD-funded grant program. So Marion County had to redo our agreement with them, and they're just asking us to execute a new agreement that now incorporates the revised HUD language, which we really don't have to be concerned about, but Marion County does, since they're the grant administrators.
Okay, you gave a description now, so we know what it is. We'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make comment on this? Now that Ms. Smith has described what it is? No? Okay, continue.
So we're coming before council to allow... to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between Marion County and the city so that we can remain in the program and hopefully seek some grant funding.
Okay. That's your report?
That's it.
Basically, it's to re-sign something that has expired.
That's correct.
Hold on. Any comments?
I just think it's good that we're online. I just looked all this stuff up. I think it's a good thing.
It's community development building grant?
Block grant.
Block grant, yes.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. You have a home investment partnership program, emergency solutions.
And there have been numerous homes within the city that have been built or have been upgraded because of this grant in the past. It's a good thing.
And Marion County gets a block of funds that they distribute, not only to municipalities within Marion County, but other organizations that qualify for grant funding, like for affordable homes, things like that.
I think I remember years ago in Chetney, there was some homes built because I wasn't living in my house, and I rented it out to the county.
Oh, okay.
While there was this family's home was being built. I'd like to see a community center.
Yeah.
Okay, any additional...
After the police department.
Any additional comments? Okay, can I have a motion?
So who second?
Okay, we have a motion that the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement, 2022-25 CDBG Home Investment Partnership Program with Marion County. Motion has been made. Second discussion is concluded. All in favor?
Aye.
Post passes unanimously, 4-0. We go to number two, Dunellen Heights Road Grading. So Troy, just give us a sense or two what this is, then we'll... because public's comments are supposed to be first. So just say what this is, then we'll have public comment, and then you can go into more details.
Every year for the last four years, we've been trying to grade or maintain the roads in Dunellen Heights, and it is that time of year for the second grading, and we got a quote at 7250.
Seven thousand... That's good. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Can I stop you?
Because I usually do this. I can say this, you know? This is what...
Well, I understand that, but can we not interrupt them? Let them at least finish their sentence?
Oh, okay.
Please, thank you.
We're good.
Okay, he's finished. All right. Would anybody like to have public comment on this? Anything on Zoom, Ms.?
No, sir.
Okay, continue. Troy?
So council, I'm just asking for your authorization to go ahead with the road grading at Dunellen Heights, contracting with Rock and Roll Paving, who's been the company we've used over the last four years exclusively that I've been here. So, and like I said, it is budgeted. It is in our roads and streets budget. Do you have it done twice this year? And I think we had 14,000 or 15,000 in that line item, so it's within the budget. It is... it needs to be done. So I'm asking council's approval to move forward and higher the contract.
Any discussion?
When I first read this, and I saw the quote, Ranger Construction, 77,000 just for grading?
Yeah, that got your attention, too. That was not a mistake. Most of the larger companies... Ranger Construction, by the way, is one out here working on Ohio Street, okay? But when they go out to do a project, they send the entire crew, and they charge up to $20,000 just for mobilization of their equipment because they're a large company that does statewide contracts and stuff. So they don't have their equipment close by. It could be as far away as Orlando or anywhere, and we've got to pay for that transportation and time. This would be the first time that they would have done the work out there, and they don't do touch upgrading, more or less. They would actually come in there and bring in a lot more equipment, a lot more lime rock, and bring it up to their stinker to maintain. So...
Looking at the difference in...
Yeah, yeah. And I've run into that, Rock and Roll Paving, and another company also gave us a quote on that driveway apron for Blue Run Overflow. You'll notice that the two quotes there was 8,000 and 35,000. Big difference in price. So that's why we go with our local guy here, Steve with Rock and Roll Paving. He's adopted Dunellen Heights as his own little project.
Okay, any further discussion by council? Would you like to put this on the consent agenda? No, wait a second. This is a video.
I make the motion to approve the expenditure request for red grading in Dunellen Heights.
We have a second. Okay. Discussion's over. All in favor?
Aye. Who's second? Ms. Anita?
Passes unanimously, 4-0. Yes, we are now in a meeting. We are out of our workshop. My apologies. Number three, agreement 2022-27 JAG Grant Police Program. The reason I asked staff to make a comment, I don't even really have a strong idea of how to describe this, so who's going to describe this? Okay, Jan?
Are you tired of me yet? This is a grant program that I, if I remember correctly, the police department receives pretty much annually through the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Program, otherwise known as JAG. The county receives a chunk of money, and it's distributed... it's shared amongst various agencies within Marion County. Dunellen's portion is $8,784, and it is a grant. There is no match, and the chief is going to use it this year for three laptop computers. And so we're looking for approval for the mayor to sign the participation letter and the associated grant documents that will follow at a later date.
Okay, thank you. Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to make comment on agenda item number three? Okay, do we... we'll have a motion a second, and then any discussion if necessary. Do we have a motion?
I move the mayor be authorized to sign agreement, AGR 2022-27 JAG Grants Distribution Letter and all associated grant documents when received.
Very good. We have a second?
A second.
Ms. Williams, second. Any discussion? Miss Odom, please note, motion's been made by Vice Mayor, second by Ms. Williams. Council has had an opportunity to discuss. No discussion. We have a motion on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Post passes unanimously. Go to number four, the new police vehicle. That's you, Jan.
Yes, sir. The police department is seeking authorization to purchase a new Ford Police Interceptor Utility Patrol Vehicle. The vehicle that they currently have, vehicle number 125, which is a 2009 Ford Expedition, it's a high-mileage vehicle, 112,000 miles, and it's in need of major repairs to the tune of $10,000, over $10,000, which it's really not worth it. They do have a vehicle budgeted this year using the one cent sales tax, and this vehicle is currently on the lot, almost ready for delivery, so there's no real downtime for the police department in waiting for it for several months. So we're seeking approval to move forward with purchasing the vehicle.
Thank you so much. Do we have any public comment on this now that Ms. Smith has described this? Anything on Zoom, Miss Odom?
No, sir.
Do we have a motion and a second?
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion was made by Vice Mayor, seconded by Ms. Kenny. The motion is to authorize the purchase of a 2022 Ford Police Utility Patrol Vehicle in compliance with the city's purchasing policy. So we have a...
Vote?
We have a motion and a second?
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion or any discussion at all? No discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Post passes unanimously. Looking forward to this one. Number five. I think everybody will raise their hand wanting to describe what this is all about. Number five discussion on the OptiTel Lease Agreement, AGR 2020-06. Who is going to lead the discussion on this?
This is going to be Andy.
Hello, Andy. You haven't spoke to us recently. Remember, you got to give us your name and address.
Well, he's speaking to us as our contracted IT person.
So he's good?
Yeah.
Well, when I go to Ms. DeArbo's meeting, she insists that I give my name and address.
You're not employed by the city.
Oh, I got it. Okay, I know where my...
You're a little sneaky there.
Yeah, I know where my position is now. Thank you very much. Andy, welcome. You have more stripes. Gotcha.
All right, so I'm just going to go and do a quick summary of what's going on or what has happened over at the optical tel building. I am sure everybody's aware of the constant, over the summer especially, the constant outages and just odd failures of our services. Actually, six...
I'm not getting annoying. Is it my phone?
My phone.
If the IT guy called in.
Better than that. Great. I want to get you this one. All right. Yeah, there we go. That's better. Okay, so we've had at least five multi-day outages with this optical tel, with our internet provider, and they have been... I'm trying to keep this brief and not hit you with too much technical stuff. They have been all characterized... they've been a little strange. Normally, you have an internet outage, and it's out, totally down. In these cases, we've lost our ability to upload to the internet, our outgoing internet speed, and our incoming speed has dropped by about 60%. And that's a fairly unique scenario. I hadn't really run into that before in about 20 years of doing this. Some similar things, but not so specific, and then not multiple times. So for it to happen once, okay, they fixed it. They, you know, we called. They said they had a technician on the way. They were going to replace some equipment. There was a fiber line cut, and they... it started working, but it was out for two and a half days the first time. The first one was on June 9. And each time that was pretty much how we proceeded. They'd call... Loretta would call first thing in the morning, internet's down, check with optical tel. They said they have an outage in the area. Fiber line's been cut, and I say, please, please get back to me. Let me know when it's back up and running so I can let, you know, we can make plans. We got no response from them, no notification when the service was down, no notification when the service was back up. I had to harass them constantly. I mean, I basically, the last time I talked to them, I'm like, I mean, I have to ask you for a callback. I know you're not going to call me back, but just so it's on the recording, please. I'm going over to unplug your connection. I won't know if it's back up unless you tell me, and I need to drive back over. Like, please, please, call me back. No callback. So obviously, completely unacceptable. And it was frustrating because the optical tel connection is a dedicated fiber optic connection. It is the best kind of internet connection you can get, and in my experience, those don't go down very often. Most providers like AT&amp;T and Comcast, if they get you a dedicated fiber connection, they're going to be giving you a service level of agreement with 99.9% uptime. So I was surprised that this was so flaky, and I really started to question what the heck was going on. And we started making plans to move to Comcast as our primary provider because you can't do business like this. You can't. I mean, it was driving me crazy, too, to get, you know, have to drop everything, reschedule your entire week out of nowhere, like six or seven times this summer has just been... that's been insane. So the last time it happened, of course, it happened in the morning, and they needed to do payroll. They needed to be in by the next day, I believe. So it wasn't... they were really waiting for the connection to come back up was not an option. We had to go out there and do something. And so I called optical tel again. I mean, I think I looked at my call log. I have some 25 calls to them this summer. And so I'm on my way out there, got to do something. Please call me back. And I go out there and just switch the connection, and while I'm waiting for the connection to come up, I kind of do a little sightseeing, check out the data center, see what it looks like, and saw water dripping from the ceiling onto their equipment rack. So I called Troy, and Troy said that we had, I think it had been about a year before, that they had been notified about that. And they looked at it and said it was rodents causing it, and then we said, no, we got to... actually, we had somebody out there to investigate. I don't remember initially. I think that was before I started.
Yeah, we did have our pest control go out there and look to see if there was active rodents in the building, and it was conclusive that no, there was none active.
How recent was that, Troy?
I want to say it was almost a year ago now.
A year ago.
I'd have to pull...
Yeah, it was over a year ago because it was before I had started. So it'd have to be over 18 months ago. But that... and it looked like nobody had really done anything to it at all when I was in there. And somebody had, obviously, was aware of it because they put a trash can underneath the dress. So at that point, I was actually really relieved because I'm like, oh, duh, there's your problem right there. You got water on your stuff. Problem solved. Maybe I can finish out my summer in peace. And so I call optical tel and say, hey, you got water dripping on your stuff. And I'm at your data center, and I'm on site waiting for a technician, and I'll be here until they get here. And they never showed up. I called two more times. Let's see. I called two more times that day. Both times, they assured me a technician was on the way. Nobody showed up. I left there at like 5:30, and nobody got there. So I covered everything up with like, with some trash bags and stuff so it wouldn't leak. They called me back. A technician called me back the next day, didn't know who I was, wondered why I was in their head-end building, and said again, I'm on my way, or somebody will be on their way. And I told him again, I'm on my way there right now. I'll wait for you. See you in a couple hours. And they never showed up. And at that point, it was back up and running, and they never notified me that it was back up and running. So we could have switched. We could have done payroll, been done, switched back, no issues, you know? They were over there and addressed the issue Friday, this Friday. So it was over 10 days after I called them and notified them that they had water leaking in their facility before they came out and addressed it. I mean, there's a lot more details there, but I really felt like you did... that phone call should have done it. Like, you have... there's a lot of expensive equipment in there. I mean, you don't need any kind of IT experience to know you don't get your networking gear wet. And so they have been unsupported, unreliable, confrontational, and we have questioned them on what... why haven't they responded? Why haven't they fixed this? And they were... yeah, I was not pleased by their response. It's a frustrating situation. So what we've decided to do, take a couple of steps to kind of mitigate this type of thing in the future. First of all, we got a faster connection from Comcast. Our Comcast internet connection should be upgraded on the 29th of this month. That will give... make our backup connection fast enough to run all our services. So then we're in a position where if our internet goes down, we don't lose email, phones, voicemail. I mean, everything goes away when we lose our internet. So if we have a backup connection that's capable of running all our services, then there's much less downtime. Long term, that's... it's still a single point of failure in that building. And so the next step would then be to, instead of having two connections, one's your normal connection, if that goes down, the other one comes up, you have them both running all the time, and if one goes down, everything's just a little slower, and you have zero interruption, and I don't have to unplug anything, and I don't have to switch everything over. But those type of things, you know, I have to reconfigure all our different systems that have static addresses. There's some other projects that we have in place that are going to make that easier. The phone system is a big one. Actually, we just got the phones showed up this afternoon. And moving the phone to the... to a cloud service means that we lose internet. We don't lose our phones. We can still use the app on a cell phone. People can still call, leave a voicemail. We can call in and change the voicemail and say, hey, our phones are down. We can't answer. Leave us a message, and we'll call you back. Doesn't completely cut us off. And then the next project would be doing the same for our email server so that when we lose internet, we don't lose email. And I feel like these are both really crucial. They've been kind of towards the top of my list ever since I started here, but you need to proceed carefully with this stuff because we live in an area where we have hurricanes, and there's... it's not an unforeseeable event for us to be without internet or power anywhere around here for days, weeks on end. And if we have our servers here and in the Greenlight, well, Greenlight Building, we will have no... have no email or phones at all during that time. Include, I mean, to the extent where the emails would just disappear, they wouldn't like pile up and you wouldn't get them, they would be gone for a week if we lost total connectivity for a week here. So those are projects that we already had in place, and so we're just kind of pushing those forward a little bit more quickly because then we'll be able to have a lot more flexibility with our, our internet provider, and we won't be so tied to one company and one single point of failure that just, you know, pulls the plug on all of the city's systems. So that's where we're at at the moment. Hopefully, new phones will be rolled out end of this week, and new Comcast connection beginning the next week, and good progress by September.
So are we still optical tell at this moment?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm seeing here that there's a lease agreement, A G R twenty twenty dash zero six, are we going to have to, can we cancel our lease?
We're talking about lease Christmas.
No, the reason I put it on the agenda that way when it was published is because I was, before all of this occurred over the weekend, I was, if we had not heard back from them after I sent an email out last Thursday to them, I was bringing this lease agreement to you to, to explain what their responsibilities are, whatever responsibility it is, whatever. So that's why we listed on the agenda as a lease agreement, so you all can make some decisions if they were still being non-responsive and still not over there trying to do something to correct the problem, what action did council have taken going forward, did you want us to go ahead and fix the AC? You know, so we weren't sure how you feel about that, so that's how that was. But then Friday, they, they did respond at some point over the weekend in a semi polite way, but still kind of not, not the, not the response you would have hoped to get from someone who had just pretty much disregarded you for the past ten days.
Well, I can say that I have, I have a real estate that lives in Rainbow Springs, the Woodlands, and she contacted me about Optical Tel, and another friend lives on Forty, they both have it, they love it, and it works. And they actually emailed the president of the company and just had no response.
Yeah, we, I think when we scheduled this, we hadn't heard from them in like a week, completely ignoring our texts and emails and phone calls, and so it was.
But we're getting out, we've got Comcast, we're going to be totally just franchising from Optical Tel?
Well, I think we'll still keep them as a backup in that Comcast, where they're going to be on, it would all be back to switching over to Optical Tel simply.
Long term, I would like to have individual connections at all the buildings, that's a, kind of now the kind of industry standard because of the, the new technology for Lincoln, stuff through the internet is, is more advanced, and so that's kind of the standard practice, but that's probably a year and a half away.
Is that all we needed?
So we'll just, we'll, we'll just keep following us and making sure that they're doing what they need to do to take care of the problem up there.
So we're going to be, both Comcast and.
And we have been.
Down anyway.
Yeah.
We're just going to be paying Comcast a little bit more than we were because they had to increase the bandwidth to support all of our systems.
Ms. Kenny?
At our home, we have Comcast, we absolutely love it, we have people all the time coming over, and we use your computers for, through, so I appreciate your situation.
And it should be, actually, a slight speed increase here as well, I mean, nothing, nothing major, but it is a slightly faster connection as well. And our Comcast rep does want to come out and speak to council at a, at a workshop or sometimes, so he can, you can have somebody to yell at.
I can just add, I, I did read the correspondence from the company, I also went over your documentation, which was quite impressive, you really documented everything and added one, two, three, four. I will say it was very disappointing, the attitude of this company and its responses to the city showed no empathy for our problem, no admittance that they might have been part of the problem, no suggestion of what they could do to help. As a matter of fact, all they did was pretty much turned it on us and said, it's your problem because you guys have a rat-infested building. Totally a letter that was, you don't see a business write a letter like that, it was just like something what a pissed-off neighbor would write to you. Wait, can you walk across? I mean, I looked at it and said, look at this, I guess the next step is to walk out the parking lot and let's, let's talk about that. So I, I just shook my head, I said, this is incredible, and then when I read your documentation of everything you went through, I says, well, it is, it is true, Andy, that the city's ability to communicate is critical, and for us to have three to five occasions where our communication was totally knocked out for an entire day, that's, that's a serious problem.
Once is, one, one multi-day outage per year is.
It's not just an inconvenience, it's, it's a serious problem where people that are trying to contact the city don't understand a phone that rings incessantly and no one picks up, what do you think a resident is thinking? Well, I guess no one's at City Hall today, you know, that kind of stuff.
Police department as well uses those phones as well, so it's, it's a public safety issue.
So I'm all for looking at the options, and if the option is to move in a different direction from them, I certainly, if it was my business to make a decision, they'd be long gone after what I just read. Okay, any other comments or questions?
No, I found that out.
Andy, very good, thank you. Thank you for your, your work, and you kind of went above and beyond.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
All right. All right, we go to number six, council comments. Anybody have a comment? 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 I just want to show a couple photos I think will be helpful, no, no shots of anybody swimming or bathing suits or anything like that. We've been talking about replacing our sign in the front, that nice sign, tear it down and maybe replacing it with electronic sign, so I went out and took some photos of various things, this will be very brief and to the point, but this is what's coming up. This is the sign that's currently out there that we had discussed about knocking down.
The Nilla on.
This was taken Saturday evening about nine fifteen, nine thirty, it's dark, so you can just see this sign, it's very nondescript, it's only illuminated because of the streetlights. Okay, Mandy, I think I got a couple more of those.
You need to get a light.
I guess, I guess it's true.
You guys are talking about spending thirty-five thousand dollars, right?
Are you going to fix that L for me, right?
Yeah, I did, I did notice while I was out there.
I think the mayor broke that.
I reached up and snapped that L off just so I could, yeah, yeah. Okay, now, now, I, I have a little light at my house that I illuminate a rock, and I just brought it out there just to show what you can do with this nondescript sign. And, go ahead, Mandy. It just rotates in different colors.
Really? Sure, thank you.
So, okay, that's good, so what we were talking about when I was talking to Georgina and Mandy about this, I says, you know, put a little illumination on this sign, put some ironwork on the top of it that maybe matches the, the direction we're going with the street lamp, uh, street signs, maybe put our emblem somewhere with that illumination, that sign could be actually very nice. Now here's a picture of the church, y'all know I was going to go over to that church where the electronic sign is. Now this is basically what you'd be seeing, I'm parked right next to the curb, so this is about how far it would be where we were talking about placing it. You can see the sign right there, I want you to take note, go back to that one, Mandy, go back to the first one. I want you to take note that when you have the small lettering, the informational lettering, it's really not that easy to read in the daytime because it's small and the bright sun. Okay, go to the next one. Now there, when you have the lettering that's big, like for instance, you say Boomtown Days, April fifteenth, something big like that, you can see that, but look at the writing in the very bottom line, you'd almost have to really come to a complete stop if you were trying to see this from a car, and look at that. Okay, go to the next one, Mandy. This gives you an idea how big the sign is in comparison to me standing by it, you know, the sign really isn't that gigantic. Okay, and there's another picture. Here again, you can see the kids, big lettering, the kingdom is really easy to read from a moving vehicle, but as you get to the lines underneath, especially the bottom line, if you, if we think we're going to use a sign like this for information, putting like a message there, it would be very difficult to be used that way. Okay, Mandy, anything else?
That's it.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring that attention, we're talking about thirty-five thousand dollar investment, and that's what it's all about. And that's my comments. You guys had asked me what I did after I got done taking pictures of signs.
I hope you walked across the street and had a beer.
Yeah, I got on my, got on my motorcycle and went to a chin joint, that's what I did. Okay, anything else?
I move city council, maybe a joint?
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much.